All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. The time is 7:00 PM on March 26, 2024. I'll call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcasts. Please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from previous meetings. I would entertain a motion to approve our minutes from March 12, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is Item B, announcements from the President. We do not have any announcements this morning, or this evening. So we can move on to Item C, proclamations. There are no proclamations this evening. Item D, citizen open forum. At this time, I would entertain any citizens who would like to speak. We'd ask them to please approach the podium, say your name and address, and we'd ask you to speak for three minutes or less. Thank you.
Good evening, and I of all the blocks would wait. I'm here to offer comments on Agenda Item LL, the very end of the agenda, proposed ordinance DY22008, annual stipend. As I mentioned before, I do support a stipend for councilors. However, I'm here once again to speak against this ordinance as written because there are still several gaps that I believe need to be addressed. Last time this was discussed was back on November 21 last year, and it was sent back to Rules and Procedures for some changes. Not sure why it's taken four months to get back here for discussion, but I have to assume that Rules and Procedures has been very busy attending to other matters. Back in November, three items were pointed out that required further deliberation: citizen input on future modification of stipend increases, clarification on how and when the stipends would be paid, and how to handle stipends when vacancies arise. I see nothing in what is being proposed tonight that addresses the first item, citizen involvement. Is that because Rules and Procedures believes that citizens should have no say in whether stipends are increased in the future or not? In general, I think most citizens would support a reasonable level of compensation for our elected council. However, I think the biggest concern that many people have is town officials deciding on their own, in the future, to give themselves raises. What would it look like, for example, if our town manager or other town employees decided on their own to increase their salaries? If you may recall, I suggested back in November forming a citizen oversight committee whose purpose would be to study the merits of any increases, including funding sources, and make recommendations to the council as to whether any increases would be warranted. The other option, of course, would be to have citizens vote at town election for any future increases. Was this discussed by the Rules and Procedures Committee? The bottom line is that you, as elected officials, are accountable to the citizens and therefore should have input on any future stipend increases. I do see that the second item, clarification on how and when stipends will be paid, has been addressed. However, the third item, how to handle stipends when vacancies arise, has only partially been addressed, as it only talks about councilors filling vacancies by special town election. What is still missing is the situation when a person is appointed to fill a vacancy. In other words, the time between when the vacancy occurs and when the special election is held, which could be any number of months. The question is whether that appointed person would be eligible. An example of this is when Councilor Wood resigned in December of 2019, and his vacancy was filled by Mark Lindy for four months. Under the current language, Mark would not be entitled to a prorated stipend. So this is the issue I'm talking about that really needs to be addressed in the language. Although this ordinance continues to evolve and improve since originally introduced back in 2021, there are still several areas that warrant further discussion, and so I recommend that you vote this down again tonight and consider the items I've mentioned for further review and inclusion before bringing it up for a final vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Hello, good evening. My name is Peter Lennaras, Mora Drive. So my comments are related to Ed with regards to the ordinance FY2288 regarding the town council stipends that will be addressed later in this meeting tonight. So mine is a lot shorter, but it's more specific about the portion of the ordinance regarding the stipends amount that reads as "follow." So it says that any modifications of the stipend amount set forth herein may be adopted by the ordinance duly adopted by the town council. So the way I read this is that we're leaving it up to the town council to be in charge of their own compensation and without any sort of checks and balances, and to me, that seems like a bad idea. So why wouldn't any considerations for change in the stipend amount be reviewed by someone like basically another committee, so whether it be a financial committee or whomever, for approval? Now, this is not, you know, personal between me or any of you. I support the stipends, but you know, it does become a bit personal because, you know, I am one of the taxpayers. So I would hope that there's some checks and balances that are put into place because from what I can tell, the way it stands now, it's $47,500 that we're looking at. So when we consider all the compensation increases just in the last year along with this, it becomes, you know, significant. And as they say, every little bit adds up. Regardless, I would like to thank any of you that are that keeping procedures in place to prevent a potential runaway checkbook would be a good thing. So I strongly recommend that, and would appreciate that we write something in this ordinance to accommodate, yeah, to accommodate and some sort of an approval process for any change in the stipends. Thank you.
Hi, Bill Wood, 388 Hayward Street. And I brought my own three-minute timer.
Perfect.
The tolerance is about a second and a half. Some of you know me from my 11 years on the council. Some of you know me from my 18 years as a Bridgewater Lion. Some of you know that I'm running for town clerk. But I'm not here to talk about any of those tonight. I am working on a handbook for town council members. The council is gonna turn over one-third of its membership in April. And years ago, we tried to adopt a practice of new councilor orientation, and it went fairly well, but it still left a lot of gaps. And so what I'm doing, and I just brought my outline tonight, what I'm asking you members who have had experience now on the council for a while, and even former members, who, if you could send any ideas about things you'd like to see in a handbook, especially for new members, please send it to Debbie, and she can forward it on to me. Now, I'll check periodically with her. So some of the subjects are, what is a town council, and what does it do? And we talked about legislative body, resources to touch base with, town council clerk, town manager, town attorney, et cetera, types of legislation. And we literally, in the first year of being a town council, had to work out what was the meaning of a resolution versus ordinance versus an order, and where does it apply? And I think that's really helpful for new folks. Roles of the town council, your role as a member, the role of the president, vice president, role of committees, and what to do with time away, which is allowed for family, work, vacations, that sort of thing. And then meeting guidelines, because all boards, committees, council need to live under open meeting law. And so we'll address some resources about that, give you some locations for where training is available. And some items there are what's a quorum, what's open meeting law, what are the town council rules, Robert's Rules Agenda, how to make amendments work. That's a very important one. Sometimes you get one amendment, two amendments, you can't have three amendments, you gotta work back up the chain, et cetera. So we'll give some notes on that. Budget cycles, budget is the biggest, really biggest strategic voice of the town council. And so we'll talk about when things should happen. I was the originator of the budget resolution, and I believe that should happen every fall. I see this year it carried on, that's great. And then elections, you know, for like ballot questions and voting on the election. So I don't want to have any agenda content about what should happen for a town council, what they want to support, not support, or whatever. I wanted to just make it so that within the working group, everybody comes in with an idea about how to do the job, not what to do in the job. So that's less than my three minutes, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak?
Good evening, Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. It's been a while since I've been before the council, so I want to start first by thanking you all for your ongoing service, and a special thank you to the three of you who are heading off the council for your many years of service, including my district counselor, Mr. George, for a while, and Mr. Gallagher, who's been here longer than all of us probably, right? On the council. So anyway, thank you for all that you've done. I have four or five comments that are not related to each other, but one is that I sent you all an article today about hybrid meetings, which is being studied by the state and on practically every other town. And I just want to encourage you to continue to study that with great energy because I think ultimately, we are going to go that way, and hopefully sooner rather than later, so that everybody in town has an opportunity to participate, whether they're here in person or at home. Secondly, I want to bring up something about parking. As you know, every now and then on Facebook, there's a discussion about parking here at the Academy Building, and also some ranting and raving about people parking here all day. And while I was here to assist with the elections, early voting, I looked out the window and saw the same car parked here every day, all day. And occasionally, I've seen other cars here. Something needs to be done about that. I think it's very unfair for someone who works here to take a spot all day long in front of the building where it says 30-minute parking only. So I hope that the town manager and the councilors can address that issue and make sure that spots are available for people who need to come and conduct town business. Third, I came here to ask you to pay close attention to what's happening at the Nip, if you aren't, to make sure that you're following the progress of the meetings, the planning board, now the Conservation Commission. There are some folks here from that area who will be speaking, I think, as well, and they have more information than I have. But there are serious issues with wetlands, and now a possible conflict of interest with people who are going to look at the wetlands. So again, I just want to encourage you to pay close attention to see what's going on down there. And finally, my usual comment about microphones. When I watch the meetings at home, some people I can hear and some people I can't. The microphones have to be near you. They can't be at the edge of the tables like some of these are. So please remember that people at home want to hear you and to keep the microphones at least within close distance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Jean De Batista from 260 Lakeside Drive. I was here at one of your prior meetings to talk about the possibility of environmental subcommittee. I wanted to do some follow-up about that. First of all, I'm interested in knowing what the process is going forward to have such a subcommittee considered. I've had some informal conversations with Fred and with others, and I would be interested in knowing what the process is moving forward. I don't know if there's already a plan to discuss that tonight. I know there's some things that Michael's going to be talking about, but I weren't sure what they were. So that is one thing that I wanted to bring back to your attention. Since that time, I have taken a little bit of a look at what types of influences we as a town can have on climate change impacts. And there's really four main areas that include transportation, how we handle building, how we handle forests and wetlands, and then whether or not we encourage, when we have projects, for those projects to use clean energy. So that's just some of the topics that I'd like to see possibly considered as part of that subcommittee. I also do want to mention a current project very briefly to say there is concerns about a potential conflict of interest occurring with that project in terms of the selection of a consultant. I do think it's extremely important that our committees that are here to protect the environment and to protect different aspects of the town's interests have the ability to do what they need to do independently of what a developer may be interested in. So I did want to bring that up, that is a current concern of the public, and I do think that it needs to be addressed at multiple levels. So that's all I have to say tonight. I do want to say that I do really appreciate everyone here's service, and I do think you all should have a stipend. I don't know what, you know, I understand and I appreciate the concerns being brought up, but I certainly hope that does occur because I realize how much work this is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Raymondetta, 317 Lakeside Drive in Bridgewater. I'd also like to say thank you for your efforts and your volunteerism. I realize there's some stipend involved, but I am sure it's a tremendous amount of work on your part to organize and take careful look at all of these issues presented to you for the town. I'd like to first support my neighbor and friend Jean De Batista on the environmental subcommittee, what a wonderful idea. And thanks to those that have offered their support to Jean, and we do hope that we will see that happen. I saw on the agenda that we're gonna be talking about public comments tonight that Mr. Dutton, the town manager, will be addressing that. And I do just want to make mention of public comments. You know, we residents, you know, as all of you, we're busy people. And if something, if we raise something, it's usually because it's important. And I can tell you, I hesitate to write a letter or make a comment unless I've really thought it through and said, you know, is this really important to do this? So on March 13, I did write an email to the town manager and the president of the town council with regard to MGLC 44, Section 53G employment of outside consultants as it related to a project up by Lake Nippenickett. And this was enough of a concern to me that I put it in writing and sent it off. And I have to say that I have not received any follow-up, at least from the two addresses, and it's a significant issue. And so I would ask that, when the public does take the time to write a letter and express concern over something significant, that we at least receive an acknowledgement and a follow-up, and I am requesting a follow-up or reply if possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Karen Siegel. I live on Three Rivers Drive in Bridgewater, 30-year resident. Kind of late to the getting to see what's going on in our town, although I've always been aware of things. So I got a little concerns with the stipends. I'm not saying I'm totally opposed to it. What I am wondering is where we determine our amounts. We have nine councilors at almost $50,000. I know other surrounding towns are bigger and have about the same amount of councilors, and they're at like 1,500. So my question is, like, how was it determined where you get the amount? And in the future going forward, how do we, do we get a say in it? Or is it always gonna be a private vote amongst the councilors? Just trying to get a little understanding with that. Basically, that's it, and I appreciate your service and time because I know it's not an easy job. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else? Yep.
Good evening, Carlton Hunt, 80 Austin Street, Energy Committee Chair. I just wanted to thank you for bringing up and getting the specialized code under Agenda Item LK. I just wanted to say thank you. It's been a year now since we first, the Energy Committee first asked the council to consider it. I'm glad it's being sent to advertising, at least I hope that's the case. Couple of things, some people had comments about how this might be specialized code, might increase costs for buildings. That may be true, but the state did a very major study that compared five different scenarios. 4,000 single-family home, 2,100 square-foot single-family home, a townhouse, four-story multi, and six-story multifamily. Their findings are that generally, you have a minimal cost with the construction, but the savings for the buyer is significant. I put together a table on this, and I'm more than happy to share it with all of you at the appropriate time, but I just wanted to encourage you to make sure this goes to advertising. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak?
Hi, Mary McGrath from Plymouth Street. So I read the MBTA FY2024 Operating Budget Oversight Report, and it was adopted and accepted by the full MBTA Advisory Board on May 16, 2023. On page five of this report, it states that the MBTA FY2024 operating budget is only balanced due to vacancies and hiring and the use of one-time funds. On page six of this report, it states similar deficits appear likely to be FY25, FY2026, FY2027, because expense growth will continue to outpace revenue growth unless ridership increase very sharply relative to recent trends. In the conclusion section of the report, it states that the riding public, cities, towns, and stakeholders are faced with looming massive budget deficits once the MBTA's reserves are spent. This is all coming at a time when the MBT ridership has not returned, and our analyst suggests that is unlucky to return anytime soon, especially given recent and well-published MBTA difficulties with equipment falling from station ceilings, slow zones, and escalated malfunctions. Based on this report, I believe it would be foolish to spend money to move the train station, as well to assume that residents living in new apartments will be taking the train anytime. According to the general guidelines to the MBTA communities, a community that has less than 100 acres of buildable station area within its boundaries, the MBTA community may locate the multifamily zoning district anywhere within its boundaries. Of course, they would like it to be walkable to the center. So the Waterford Apartments, the 85 apartment building, and many more multifamily units surrounding the college, but not on the college property, might be a good solution. Hill Street property is technically the property of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Therefore, I suggest Bridgewater requests to use this property for multifamily housing from the Commonwealth. I hope the town council will not vote to pass the Form Base Code. Form Base Code puts the form of the building first. If you check out Pratt Town Lane right off Plymouth Street, you'll see what Form Base Code looks like. Bridgewater's zoning code puts land first. Some have said that Bridgewater is unfriendly to developers. I say that's not true. Bridgewater residents value land and open spaces. This is why people move to Bridgewater. We need to regroup and come up with a different solution to comply with the MBTA requirements. Since we have to December 2024, we can still apply to the grants in April and May because we are not non-compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak?
Adeline Ellenberg. And for the people at home, I am running for Councilor-at-Large. I just wish to address the stipend issue. I think it would be more appropriate for a stipend around $1,500, as was mentioned. And I don't think that we should be dipping into the taxpayer funds in that manner. Second point I would like to make is that any future raises in the stipend will be approved by taxpayer referendum. So I would hope that the council would agree to adopt such proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I will now close the citizen open comment. I do apologize, at the beginning of the meeting, I typically do a moment of silence in memory of the veterans, and today I missed that. And so I would ask your forgiveness, and I would like to actually do that now if I could, before we proceed. So although we did not receive any notifications of any veterans in Bridgewater passing away, we do want to recognize the sacrifice that other veterans have made. So I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence in honor of our veterans. Thank you. Moving on to Item E, appointments. We have four appointments this evening. The first one is a reappointment to the SAVE Committee, Paula Bracken and Lorraine Carosa, both for terms of 2024 through 2026. Oh, sorry, one is 2024 through 2026, and then Lorraine is 2024 through 2027. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next one we have is appointment to the Housing Authority, Paul Batista, for the term of 2024 through 2027. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next one we have is the ratification of the Finance Director. I would defer to our town manager to introduce this.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's certainly my distinct pleasure this evening to bring before the council two members of our Bridgewater team to fill critical roles. It's not always that we can promote from within, but when we have two such accomplished people, it's certainly my honor to present them to the council. Lori Guarini certainly is no stranger to Bridgewater or to the council. She is a dedicated and long-serving member of our team, and I'm excited and pleased to present her name for ratification as Finance Director. With a financial background spanning over four decades, Lori's, that couldn't be true. Anyway. Lori's expertise in municipal operations and her demonstrated command of our town's increasingly complex financial intricacies makes her the ideal leader to guide our finance department forward. Lori's studies at Bridgewater State laid the foundation for her career. She went on to achieve her Certified Governmental Accountant designation through the Mass Municipal Auditors and Accounting Association. Her practical knowledge, coupled with her dedication to excellence and continuous education, uniquely positions her to lead our finance department into a new era. So about seven years ago, during a pivotal phase in our reorganizing and revitalizing of our town's internal financial operations and controls, we recruited Lori back from a couple of years in the private sector, which was, she'll admit, a mistake, but that's okay. She was and continues to be a critical piece of our financial puzzle. She was instrumental in developing robust internal policies and procedures. Her meticulous attention to detail has helped shape the policies that have stabilized town finances, and I know the council and the Finance Committee have seen those in action and would agree with me. So beyond balance sheets and spreadsheets, Lori's impact is felt right across the organization. Her quiet leadership during this most recent extended transition period has earned her the respect and admiration of her colleagues. She cares about what she does, she cares about the people that work for her, and she really cares about the success of the town of Bridgewater. So as we enter into a new phase in Bridgewater, Lori will play a pivotal role in steering our financial operations, contributing to policy development, ensuring stringent compliance with regulatory requirements, and exploring new ways to finance our huge backlog of capital projects. So we are very confident that Lori will excel in her role as Finance Director, and I ask that you ratify her appointment as Finance Director for the town of Bridgewater.
Thank you for the overview. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item we have is Item D, ratification of the Fire Chief. I would defer to the town manager on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deputy Chief John Slats, current acting chief, has a distinguished career in public service, beginning with, as an intern with the Plymouth County Probation Office in 1991. Later, after working for the Old Colony YMCA as a shift supervisor, he joined the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office in 1993, rising to the position of lieutenant. In 1996, he began his long career with the Bridgewater Fire Department and has since played a pivotal role in its growth and development, notably... Notably, Deputy Chief Slats has been serving in various leadership capacities within the department since 2015, showcasing his unwavering dedication and expertise in the field. His consistent commitment to leadership roles over the years underscores his deep knowledge, experience, and effectiveness in guiding and managing teams, which are pivotal pivotal in maintaining the department's operational excellence. Deputy Chief Slats's name comes to you for ratification after a lengthy process to identify and select the next chief whose job will be to transition the department into the 21st century role of a municipal fire department. His tenure will see more changes to the department's role than any time in the past. When we sought out input from our team members, firefighters and staff, both in the command staff and the rank and file, about the qualities they wish to see in the new chief, it was strikingly evident that Deputy Chief Slats embodies those qualities. He has consistently been described as the consummate professional, an attentive listener, a fair decision-maker, steadfast steadfast in his commitment, reliable, and truly a leader. These attributes, again, obviously make him the ideal choice to lead our fire department. So we are confident that John will excel in his role as chief, and I ask that you ratify his appointment as chief of the Bridgewater Fire Department.
I would entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Thank you to our two new town leaders, and thank you to our town volunteers as well. Moving on to item F, hearings. The first item we have is A, Proposed Zoning Amendment Ordinance D FY 24004, Central Business District and Form Base Code. This hearing was actually opened at a previous meeting, so it is still open today. If anyone from the public cares to speak about this issue, I would invite you to approach the microphone. Please.
Hi, Bill Wood, 388 Hayward Street. I didn't prepare remarks, but thinking about it since I saw it on the agenda. When I was on the council, I was District Six representative, which covered most of the Central Business District, and P. Call and Bodis lived adjacent. And together, we sponsored the last major change in the zoning code that was worked through and took a long time, but to get there. Overall, I am in favor of the Form Base Code. I think you've done some tweaks, I heard, moving down from six floors to five floors, which I think is a positive thing. If you can't move the train station, then five floors generates a lot of traffic, but that's a different subject. What I want to touch on in my comments here is the amount of retail space that's required. In the old code, and I believe the new code, Central Business District calls for 30% commercial. Now, commercial has a number of different things. It can be a retail item like a bank. It could be an office space, it could be something else. But the rule, and I was on rules and procedures for a long time, the rule is 30%. Now, the Perkins Foundry Project is a good project, but they're coming in at about 12%. So when our town only has 12 or 13% business in the in the footprint of our taxation, and a new big project comes in at 12%, you're not growing commercial. There's a rule in place for a reason. Now, over the years, I understand brick and mortar is a tough business, and I think maybe the rule needs to be changed. But I think that the council needs to consider what the rule should be. Maybe it's 20%, maybe it's 15%, maybe it's something else. But consider that, put it in the code, and then make sure all the developers conform to that rule and not go for exceptions to go back to 12 or 15, you know, 12% or less percent. Because then it's just residential, and you don't have a central business district as the code calls for. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak?
Good evening again, Carlton Hunt, 80th Street. I'd like the council to consider the decision process in this Form Base Code. Right now, it's done by a department of the town, of which the majority do not live in the town, people that support that do not live in the town. I would appreciate and ask you to consider having them do the work, bringing a recommendation to the planning board for ratification by a duly-appointed public body of residents of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Okay. I do think this still has some open activities on it. So I would actually entertain a motion to continue this again to our next meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote on that motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion will be continued to our April 9 meeting at 7:15 p.m. The next item we have is item G, license transactions. This is petition P 2024 017, granting of a transfer of a beer and wine license. HR Group Inc. doing business as Nick and Angelo's Pizza. The time is 7:36. I will now open the public hearing. And I'll start by asking the petitioner if they'd like to make a presentation.
Sure. I'm not sure who the president is. I thought it was you. Okay, I apologize. Mr. President.
I blend in.
Members of the council, my name is Tom Truax. I'm attorney up in Salem, Massachusetts. With me is one of the owners of the the business. It's Hanny Khalil. He's the treasurer of the corporation. He's also the 50% owner of the corporation. He's also the proposed license manager, which is before you tonight as well. The underlying transaction is fairly straightforward. It was just a sale of assets, essentially all the assets of the business, Nick and Angelo's. And it also included a transfer of the Section 12 Restaurant Wine and Malt Beverages License. There was financing involved in this transaction with seller financing. I believe the ratio was 65% financing. As for experience, Mr. Khalil comes before you with about nine to 10 years of experience in the restaurant business. I've known him for all those 10 years. I know the businesses he's run. He's run them well. He owned his own restaurant, I believe that was in Stoughton. Lucky Pizza for four years up through 2022. So he's well-versed in the restaurant business and the same type of business, which is Nick and Angelo's. He is also tip certified. And as, since I've been doing this for many, many years, I give my speech to every one of my clients in reference to what they do. And knowing this business, I've told them card everyone. So you and I go in there, we're going to get carded no matter what. Even if you look as old as I do, you're going to get carded. As to the operation of the the business, it's pretty much going to stay the same. Pretty much a turnkey operation. The all-but-one employee was retained. That one employee that left went to California, Florida.
One moved in Florida.
And otherwise, there's a continuity of the employees that are there. The store hours are going to remain the same, as well as the store layout is remaining the same. So as I said, it's pretty much a turnkey operation. And since it's going to be a turnkey operation, as I understand it, this was a pretty well-run restaurant before, and I believe it will continue to be run just as well under Ramani, his partner, who I know as well, and Hanny, and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So we'll go through a series of actions now. The first one is, are there any general questions from the public? Okay, I see none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? I see none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? I see none. And then lastly, are there any questions from the town councillors? Okay, I see no questions from the town councillors. At this time, the time is 7:39. I'll close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? I see none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to item H, presentations. There are no presentations this evening. Item I, the town manager's report. We have a few items on the report this evening.
I'm wondering if it would be in order to take New Business, item B, out of order?
Yes. Item, New Business.
It's.
Yep.
Ordinance D FY 24006, and then general ordinance is relative to the Veterans Department.
Yep, we have a motion on the floor to take item NB. It's general ordinance relative to the Veterans Department out of order. Do we have a second?
Point of order, so you would have to take that section. So you would take New Business out of order. You wouldn't take a specific aspect of New Business out of order.
Thank you, appreciate it. So amended motion to take N, New Business, out of order? So we have a motion on the table to take N, New Business, out of order? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. We'll take item N out of order. All right, so N is New Business. We have two items under New Business. The first is item A, Order O FY 24039, deed in lieu of foreclosure for Zero Laurel Street. I would defer to the town manager for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. The town attorney might have more on this, but it's quite simple from my perspective. Often, when we have a number of outstanding tax bills and we are ready to foreclose the owner, and in this case, it's an estate, opts to deliver a deed in lieu of foreclosure and negotiates that with the town. And that is what you see before you tonight. It's essentially quote-unquote "tax title property", and and the estate has offered the deed in lieu of foreclosure. So I encourage you to forward this to, I believe, Budget and Finance Committee.
The only other thing I would add to that is that we do our due diligence before we even get to the point of asking you all whether or not this is a property that we would want to take. And we also require that the party seeking to deed the property to the town hire counsel to issue a title insurance policy to the town so that we know we're also getting good title. So we look at the title, we have them issue their own title insurance policy, and then we do all our due diligence before we get it to the point of you all considering it.
Are there any questions for the town manager or the town attorney? Okay. At this time, then, I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item we have is item B, General Ordinance D FY 24006, amend general ordinance relative to the Veterans Department. I am the sponsor of this, so maybe I could just give a quick introduction. We, in prior meetings, have, many prior meetings, have talked about the new structure for the Veterans Affairs Department within Bridgewater. We talked about moving to a district structure. We've had many discussions back and forth on the pros and cons of that, the value of that. To move forward with that, per our code, we need to vote on that change because it is a slight change in the structure of that town organization. And so this is essentially the language that allows us to formalize that change to a district. And so we want to make sure that we just process that correctly. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to refer to Rules and Procedures.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager or the town attorney. So I guess somewhat the conversation last meeting in regards to the process, it being a district, not technically falling under our code per se. So this is bringing this forth to try to bring that into the code. Would it be proper, if it were to come back from Rules and Procedures with a recommendation that we actually form District Veterans Committee, kind of like the school committee, made up of residents of Bridgewater and residents of Rainham, who would actually source the candidates, present them to the bodies, kind of work as the school committee does, where the veteran service, the district veteran service officer would actually report to that committee, and they would be responsible for making sure? Could that come back from Rules and Procedures as a recommendation?
Honestly, I don't I don't think so. I think that's a separate matter because the change that's being proposed now is just simply to change it to a district. And the language in there, the only amendment being made to the current part of the code is essentially that it's a district and that the hiring of the veterans officer under the district is made up and done by a board, which is actually spelled out by Mass General Laws. So we don't make that rule. The way that it's actually hired is each district has a board member. The board member, as stated under Mass General Laws, is either the town manager, if you have a town manager form of government, or the chairman for the Board of Selectment, or his or her designee. So if we had three towns, it could essentially be two chairpeople and a town manager, right? So that's who selects that person. That's all that this change in the code really can do because we're just mirroring what Mass General Laws says. So there is no real leeway there, there's no flexibility to that because we're literally just following the law relative to how that board is made up.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would only add to what the town attorney said is we do have, each town has a veterans council. So there is a veterans board, a citizens board, that will certainly help guide the VSO in their work and effectively would be engaged with any future hiring process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lindy?
So I have a question. It's kind of a like informational question, and I'm not sure who it's to. But, Mr. President, as the sponsor yourself, you're leaving the council, and do you need someone to be co-sponsor to continue it forward? Because does it not die with the sponsor?
That's a great point. Yes, I think it's a good idea.
I would be willing to do that.
Great. So do we want to make a motion to amend, to add a co-sponsor of Councillor Lindy?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Councillor Lindy is now a co-sponsor on this. Please, Dr. Perry.
Thank you. With this amnesty procedure going forward to to put this ordinance in place, can we not make the hire until this is in place? Are we being held up by hiring a new agent until we have this in place?
I am not sure of the answer.
I think likely because you need to adopt the district, and then you need to have the board formally created, which there will be, there will be an agreement between the two towns. But the board is made up of the designee, who I believe the town of Rainham has already voted on, who the designee would be. We're not sure, maybe they haven't. But yeah, so you really do need to put this into place. Then the board needs to be created. Then the agreement should be made between the two towns. And then the two will work together to hire that person. So there is a process that will have to be followed before we can get to the hiring.
Okay.
So what kind, through you to the town attorney, so what type of timeline are we looking at then?
I mean, I think as soon as you all approve the district and the change to the ordinance, I don't anticipate, and the town manager can correct me if I'm wrong, there being issues between the town of Rainham and the town of Bridgewater relative to the agreement. I think it should be a pretty standard agreement, and then the parties will just start communicating on hiring that person. So I don't have specific dates, but the sooner you get it into place, the sooner it can start happening.
And I, and I think the intention is to try to move quickly on this. We want to make sure that the language in our, in our code matches the conversations.
So yeah, I just would certainly encourage Rules and Procedures to take this up ASAP and get that back to us quickly.
Thank you. Councillor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. I really didn't want to get critical tonight, but I really wish we saw this, you know, two or three months ago. Because, you know, I've been asking all along since this idea was brought up, you know, does the council have a vote in this? And we were told no, but here is something before us that we need to vote on to make this happen. And it is another delay. The town of Rainham, at their selectmen meeting in January, voted to enter into an agreement with Bridgewater to form a district. And now we're just doing this. So, and we still don't have a person hired. When we've been told the last couple of meetings that it's imminent, and offer's going out, we're down to two good people. that it's imminent and offers going out, we're down to two good people. And now this. I mean, this probably won't come back before I get off the council. I don't know, maybe, maybe for April twenty-third. So having said all that, I guess my question is, this, this change in this admin code does not specifically say the town of Rainham. It just says district. So there is a possibility that down the road, other towns could join the district, right? But is that something that you would like to see? Or?
I think, it depends, it obviously depends on the circumstances, but I think, you know, the more within reason, the more towns that we can add to a district, the better quality employees we can hire for the district. So it's, you know, if we had three towns, I think that puts us at a level where we can actually hire people that are far more qualified than if we were just a single town. Four, five, six towns, there are, there are plenty of examples statewide of those. They worked very well. Is that right for us? I mean, that's, that's a decision I think that we'll make when that, that comes, when that possibility comes down the road.
No, I, I, I think that the sooner we get this resolved is the better. I mean, it's been going on long enough. I had hoped to have this resolved before I left the council, so if it comes back by April twenty-third, that'd be great. I'm still not a big fan of the district, but if it's, if it's what the will of the council wants, that's fine. But as Counsel Perry said, I think, you know, we really need to get a veterans agent in place. You know, at least five months now without having our own veterans agent to service the veterans of the community. I know they've had access to a veterans agent, which is fine, but the sooner the better. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
So I appreciate the comments, and I'm happy to lend some perspective since we were all hearing these conversations. I think that most, the majority of folks here pushed back hard on the notion of allowing Mr. Dutton to hire independently as, as what we understood to be his role. And then when I pointed out that I did not believe it was part of our purview, we doubled down and decided to make sure that we were following the rulebook by the book. So that's what's part of this delay. My question is, if it goes to, is it rules and procedure?
Rules and procedure. Yeah, I think we, I mean, we have options with the motion, but rules and procedures is one of them.
And if the recommendation comes back not to do a district, I'd like to know what the implications are. Because that's what the majority of you all were pushing for, is not to have a district. So if there's further delay, it's going to happen if this council does not vote for a district. I want to be real clear about that. And maybe we should understand what the ramifications are. If the recommendation comes back not to do a district, because that'll also affect Rainham.
Yeah, I would maybe defer to the town manager. If we did not do a district, what is the plan B?
I think then we would have to go our separate ways and each town would hire independently. And again, I think, I mean, I've said it before, but it bears repeating. I think the quality of candidate that we could get would, would be diminished in that case.
Yep.
Yep, sorry, if I could just add one more comment. I, I know Mr. Dutton has said this multiple times. I think that he and the administration want the exact same thing, and that is to put a really good qualified person into this role. And I think he also said it several times as well. Sorry, not to speak for you, but that person will help assess what the needs are for expanding into other roles within the parameters of this, this district. So there was a lot of very strong words shared in previous conversations around the fact that you all disagreed. And I hope that you can see that there's really good potential here and not delay this any further. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I?
Please.
Through you, just on those comments, at least from my perspective, I don't think I ever said that I was against the district. I think what we did was to weigh the benefits of a district. I think the real concern was the hiring of the V S O if it were a district position. But obviously Attorney Rollins has, you know, stated the M G L, which makes it very straightforward. The only thing that I'm really concerned about is the conversation we had last meeting with the regulations required for a district versus what the veteran service officer said to you about, well, these are the, these are the regulations, but, you know, you don't necessarily, I'm, I'm kind of paraphrasing, have to follow them to the letter of the law. That's, that's my concern. If, if a district requires a V S O, a part-time V S O and an administrative full-time, that's what we should be doing. And if, if you want to allow the V S O to pick that, that's fine. As long as the mandate is there, that these are the regulations that we have to fulfill. Not that if you come in and say, you know what, I can do it myself with somebody else. So I think that was probably a lot of the concerns that were voiced out after we were told what the requirements were. So I would put that out there for your comment in regards to, I don't see an issue with the V S O hiring their own assistant and maybe an admin. But I don't want to be sitting here a year from now seeing just a V S O and an admin because the V S O feels they don't need an assistant.
So I think, I think you hit the nail on the head, and I think that was the source of a lot of confusion. So it, I, you know, I can't deny what, what the state Veterans Affairs told me. But I can also tell you that our, our intent absolutely is to make sure that we're fully staffed so that we can provide the services that our veterans community need. And I think I mentioned before, we have more, Bridgewater is on the higher side of proportion of, of veterans in the, living in the community. You know, both Bridgewater and Rainham have a fairly high percentage of veterans that live in the community. And we know that there are services that are out there, veteran services that, 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 you know, have been met so far barely, but there are a lot more services we can provide, a lot more interaction that we can have and a lot more public outreach that we can have. So, so to Counselor George's point, that's, that's, that's confusion, I think, that we've set aside. We know where we're going. We know that we're going to have full-time veteran services officer, a full-time assistant. And then once we can make sure that we know what, what skill set we need for the part-time role, or if it takes a full-time role, it takes a full-time role. So we're certainly, certainly open to that. But, but certainly, once we know the skill set that we need to recruit for, then we can recruit for that and get it hired.
Great.
Thank you.
Counselor Lindy?
I appreciate Counselor George's comments, and I would echo them. But I think the regulation requires a full-time V S O, another full-time person, and a full-time admin. I don't think the part-time is in the regulation, and I just want to make sure that's the case, one way or the other.
Thank you. Counselor Gallagher?
Can I get an answer to that, though?
What?
Can I get an answer to that from somebody?
I can, I mean, our understanding after reading the regulations and speaking with veteran services is that, that we are full-time veteran services, part-time veteran services, and a full-time admin. And so we can certainly vet that and, and bring up the regulations during rules and procedure meeting on that. So we'll look at that.
Just a note, thank you, Mr. President. We know we need a full-time veterans agent. We know we need one. We don't really need this to pass to move forward with the hiring of a person. We don't. It's, it's, the district would come into play if this passes where they would maybe need a part-time person and the staff. We know we need a full-time agent. We're going to need one, whether this turns into a district or not. There shouldn't be, I understand you want this to be in place because it looks cleaner, but there's no reason why we can't move forward with the hiring of the, could not have moved forward, hiring of a full-time agent. And then at the same time, move, move forward with the district. Other towns create districts around the current agent. They don't wait for the agent to leave and say, oh, let's now bring in a district. They can't, the hiring could be done before the district is set.
So I can tell you that we are proceeding along with the hiring process regardless. I can tell you that.
Yeah. Thanks. Any additional questions? Okay, that's my understanding as well. I think, again, the idea is to formalize in our code, I think the conversations that we've supported publicly here. Send to rules and procedures or hold it?
It's up to you guys, yeah.
Yep.
That was just the only suggestion before the town manager made his comment. If the, if the process is still going to be expedited as far as hiring someone, my suggestion was if sending it to rules and procedures was going to slow down this process, I was going to suggest keeping it at a council level since we're all familiar with the situation so we could take it up at the next meeting and expedite the process. Obviously, sending it to the subcommittee is going to make it take a little more time.
Yeah, I support that as well. So I would entertain, so entertain. Do we, sorry, what was the motion?
We have to address first.
And what was the motion on the floor? Sorry.
Rules and procedures.
Okay.
Unless someone wants to pull that motion.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Let's vote on that one to go to rules and procedures. And the alternative after that is to consider keeping it here for speed. So all those in favor of referring to rules and procedures, say aye. All those opposed say nay. Nay. The motion fails.
Make a motion to keep it at a council level, please.
Second. I'm so moved.
We have a motion in a second to keep it at the council level and vote it at our next scheduled council meeting. Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. We'll consider it at the next meeting. Thank you. All right, we took item N, new business, out of order. We will now return back to item I, the town manager's report, starting with item A, addressing any public comment follow-up from the prior meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items, and I hope I didn't create more confusion trying to clarify. But this agenda item, I'm going to put on, on a weekly base or every twice monthly basis in order to answer some of the questions that get asked at council meetings to the extent that I can. If I, if I can't answer a question, then, then obviously I won't. But, but the questions that I can answer, I will spend a little bit of time under this agenda item following up. So the only two I have right now, and I've, I've written down a few other from, others from tonight's meeting, which will be on the April ninth agenda, but public comment clarity, we had a number of questions about public comments in both council meetings and, and committee meetings. And honestly, we will dig into that and try to create a very, a lot of clarity based on some recent S J Supreme Judicial Court cases, federal Supreme Court cases, and, and suggest some amendments to the admin code and the council rules and procedures for the next council to take up. So based on that, we'll issue very clear guidance, at least interim guidance before we get to that, those changes to the admin code. And then, and more permanent guidance after that. But, but I suspect we'll issue some guidance after our budget season is, is passed on, on overall public comment during, during any meeting. The other issue we had was pavement on Stetson. There evidently was a, a fire, a transformer fire. Transformer fell off a pole, I guess, and damaged the pavement. That will be repaired. That's on our list of spring chores, and the roadways department will be repairing that sometime this spring. So that is on the list. So I wanted to let people know that. Got a fire station update. Again, we've got Concom Conservation Commission and Planning Board approvals. Both come with conditions, which are all sensible and manageable. We do expect to break ground within the next month or so and do clearing, wetland crossing, foundation work. And after that, obviously, the steel goes up. That should bring us into the fall. There is some urgency to get the building up prior to winter. Obviously, we've had some very mild winters. So I don't want to be the doomsayer and think that we're due for a bad winter, but, but we do want to get the building up prior to the winter, just to be on the safe side. And the current timeline shows that we can do that, so we're, we're good there. The winning bidder, which I may have mentioned in prior, prior council meeting, was M. O'Connor, general contractors with a bid price of twenty-one million nine hundred thousand. And for those who weren't here, when this building was redone, M. O'Connor is known to us. They were the contractor on this building. Did a very good job. And, and when they were here for a meeting a couple of weeks ago, made a point of walking around the building just to make sure it was in good shape. So kudos to them. The, I think we had a question on fire hydrants, most probably generated because there was a hydrant that was bagged in the front. And when we bag a hydrant, it's out of service, obviously. We are in the, in the midst of an ongoing assessment of all our hydrants, and some of them will be repaired, some of them will be replaced, some of them are fine. And Central Square and, and I think it was Old Pleasant, were taken care of over the past, past several weeks. But I will hopefully answer a question before it's asked. We have very close communications between the water department and the fire department. So if there's a hydrant taken out of service, the water department and the fire department are right on top of it. The fire department has a whole host of standard operating procedures. And, and when they know of a hydrant that's been out of service, they adjust their standard operating procedures accordingly. So, so there's never a risk that the fire department is going to show up and tie into a hydrant or try to tie into a hydrant that was taken out of service. That, that won't, that won't happen. So I realize I didn't stop for any questions on those two, but any questions on, on the hydrants or fire station? I'm happy to answer.
Counselor Lindy?
Through you to the town manager. So the one outside of here is now fixed?
That's now operable. Yep.
Thank you.
So when summer comes, we can all play in the, no, no, we can't do that.
All right, I think we can move on.
Styles and Hart update, Styles and Hart Park. The contracts for construction are right there, waiting for the town attorney to sign off on them, as is our normal practice. And Ramco was the winning bidder on that project. They are highly recommended. They've done a number of small jobs for us, the town of Bridgewater over the years, and we know them pretty well. The winning bid was seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. If you recall, we appropriated something to the tune of a million four. So this is an excellent, excellent price. We also have National Park Service grant to the tune of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, if memory serves, to offset that as well. So we are in good shape with Styles and Hart. That construction will begin. They'll mobilize as soon as they get the contracts back. I've issued a notice to proceed, so the clock is on, so they will mobilize very shortly. So happy to answer any questions about that one.
I just signed them.
So the delay won't be on Jason's end. Municipal parking lot update, I think, I think Counselor McKinnon, I think, had asked for an update on the revenues. So to date, we have collected just under a hundred thousand dollars in twenty-two. Twenty twenty-one was COVID, so, so that was a, obviously, a wonky year for revenues. But in F Y twenty-two, we collected almost twenty-three thousand. F Y twenty-three, we collected twenty-five, a little over twenty-five thousand. F Y twenty-four to date is just under twenty thousand. So the money collected there, I, I realize it's not a huge amount, but the money collected is critical to our engineering efforts for Central Square upgrades. And that's, if, if some members remember, that's why we created this program and, and why we segregated the fund so that we had the money in place to do the initial engineering that we needed to do to, to make improvements, safety improvements to Central Square, traffic patterns and sidewalks. So, so that's the, the intended purpose of that funding. And, but happy to answer questions about that.
Yeah, Counselor McKinnon?
Are there any plans on paving it?
The town lot in the back of Town Hall, I know D P W is looking at that right now. And it does, at the very least, needs some heavy patching.
One whole, probably ten parking spots are crumbling into C V S's parking lot, you know?
So they're aware of that.
Okay. Any additional questions, Counsel McKinnon?
Through you to the.
Yeah, Counsel George?
Through you to the town manager. So that hundred thousand, is that strictly just paid parking?
That is just paid parking. That does not include any parking tickets or citations that we issue. That is just paid parking, that does not include any parking tickets or, uh, citations that we issue.
Do we know what that number is?
Uh, I don't have that number, but I can get it.
That would be a nice number to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
Flag Street, uh, update, um, so I realize that there's, um, it's not the ideal, uh, right now, but, uh, DPW is, is rerouting, uh, Flag Street traffic through Winter Street, uh, which is only in slightly better condition, uh, arguably. And that decision was driven by the fact that, uh, it's the closest alternate road from Flag, uh, the Flag Street, Bedford Street intersection. Uh, and as I say, certainly not ideal, uh, but it is the closest. We are waiting, um, to reroute, uh, traffic back, uh, through the short section of Flag Street to Conan Street, um, and then, uh, put up a warning sign, um, a number of warning signs on, on the use of Flag. So all, uh, designed to, uh, reduce the, uh, amount of traffic on Flag, uh, as best we can, while we, uh, wait for that, uh, project to work its way through the funding process. Not our funding process, state funding process. Winter Street, uh, that work will begin this spring, uh, so obviously the, the rerouting and the use of Winter, uh, will, uh, not be possible, uh, once work starts on, on Winter. And as I say, that, that work is, uh, slated to begin within the next, probably, uh, about a month or so, so. I will add, I, uh, did get a report today of a malfunction, uh, or a perceived malfunction, certainly of, of the traffic light on Winter and Bedford. And so, since that is owned and operated by the state, we have, we have let them know. So we've, uh, informed the state that, that, uh, that, that they need to give a little attention to that light. And I think, I think it's the, the green light timing and, and the, uh, I think it's the green light timing that was the issue. So, so as of today, the state's aware of that. But happy to, happy to answer questions about that one.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, Counselor Chase?
Mister President, um, Mister Dutton, thank you for, uh, your response in connection with, uh, Winter Street and Flag Street. Do we know, uh, and I realize you've indicated that we're a waiting word on, uh, state funding for the rehabilitation of Flag Street, but do we have any realistic window in which we can predict when work might take place on that road?
I think, uh, we have, uh, partial funding, uh, right now. So the partial funding will probably, uh, get us, uh, drainage replacement. And so we are planning on plowing ahead, uh, more short, short-term, you know, early summer, uh, on, on the drainage replacement. Uh, that will make for, um, at least over the, the next year, is my guess. That'll make for, uh, a, probably a bumpy road. Obviously, they, they cut the road, they, they pull out all the drainage that's bad, replace it, and then, uh, uh, put it, put the, the, what, refill a hole and then patch it. It won't be an ideal, uh, situation, but, but that's just, uh, in terms of how funding works, uh, at the municipal level, that's, that's what we can do at this point, uh, to fix Flag. Once, once we get that done, there'll be no need for a detour or for, for, uh, a rerouting of trucks, um, on, on the Flag, uh, piece of that. So, so that is, um, that, this summer will, will be that work.
Uh, thank you, and, and just, uh, very quickly with respect to the traffic signal at the intersection of, uh, uh, Winter and, uh, and Broad Street. I think that, um, my interpretation of the, the resident's concern with respect to the light cycle is actually, and I don't know if it should be characterized as a, uh, an operational malfunction, but the timing just, uh, so, uh, significantly favors traffic on Route eighteen, and it provides for a very quick, uh, cycle for traffic, uh, from, coming from Winter Street, the western end of Winter Street, onto Route eighteen. And I think the issue is that for pedestrians who would be inclined to cross Route eighteen at that intersection, it presents a very precarious, uh, you know, trip for them, because it's such a quick, uh, light cycle. So, uh, I, that may be the more accurate description of what was the resident's concern that I relayed to you.
Excellent. I'll make note of that, and we'll pass that along to the state as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions on that one? Alright, let's move ahead to Old State Farm Trail update.
Uh, the Old State Farm Trail, as the council knows, is an initiative that's really being spearheaded by, um, Natural Resources Trust of Bridgewater and, uh, and volunteers, uh, very heavily volunteer-driven, uh, which is great, um, uh, if, if, again, if the, uh, council recalls, in return, uh, for mitigating the impact of a fire academy in Bridgewater, uh, at the state, um, DOC property in terms, um, in, uh, an effort to mitigate that, this, the legislation that called for that, uh, also called for, uh, granting the town, uh, trail easement, uh, along DOC property, mostly along the river, uh, front, along, uh, at the DOC property. Only because it's the state, they, uh, gave us the easement, but then told us that we had to cover the cost of, uh, surveying and, uh, and recording of the easement. So, um, the community preservation funds, uh, that you voted, uh, were allocated towards that, as well as some private funding that, uh, the group used, uh, to pay the state to hire the engineering firm to do the survey, um, and give us the easement description. That, uh, that process or that, uh, easement is almost complete. The engineering firm has completed its work, and now the, uh, Department of Capital Asset Management, um, are reviewing that, and will send it along to the town, uh, for recording, uh, as soon as their review is finished. So, um, regardless, the, the ad hoc committee, uh, Old Fa- State Farm Trail Committee is plowing ahead with additional private foundation grant funds, uh, and other state, uh, grant, uh, applications, trail, uh, applications, uh, all for the purpose of actually constructing the trail, uh, which is, uh, not an inexpensive proposition. And the group, um, the group has done a very good job of funding, um, funding so far. And, uh, that work continues, the expectation is that they'll have enough money, uh, to construct the trail. Hopefully, uh, they'll know exactly what they can do, uh, sometime late summer or fall. And I can tell you that the group, as we are with Styles and Hart, the group is hoping to do, uh, a sight impaired friendly trail. So, uh, folks with sight, uh, impairment, uh, can feel free to use the trail and, uh, navigate, uh, its entire length. So that's, that's their hope, uh, there is a cost to that, but that's their hope. So, happy to answer questions.
Do we have any?
Yep.
Uh, Dr. Perry?
Thank you, through you to the Town Manager. Uh, do you know if the NRT has received or heard back on those grants yet for construction, or are they still waiting?
Uh, they're still waiting on, on one, I know, uh, but they have applications in, uh, they're completing applications now for private foundation funding, and I believe the Mass Trails Grant, uh, deadline is either, is, I believe is coming up. So, uh, I haven't signed, I, I have to sign the application, and I haven't signed it yet, but I know they're working on the application.
And, and how long would it take to hear back on that?
Uh, generally several months.
Number of months, okay. Thank you so much.
Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, item H, Vernon Street Bridge Issue Update.
Uh, Vernon Street Bridge, um, so I can tell you, I think the, uh, there was some discussion last meeting that, um, some weird ownership of the bridge, that Middleborough owned it, but maybe we owned it, or maybe nobody owned it. So interestingly, uh, DPW had reached out to Middleborough, and Middleborough's understanding is that each town owns, uh, the lane that goes into their town, which I'm almost sure is not possible, but, uh, regardless, that's the understanding of Middleborough, so it doesn't, doesn't really, uh, I guess it doesn't matter, um, because, um, it turns out that, uh, the bridge, Mass DOT is actually in the, uh, design stages of, uh, of replacing, uh, of a process that will result in the replacing of that bridge, uh, which will be, uh, probably several, several years out. But they are in the j- design process, they've, they've taken over that, and they intend to do that project as a Mass DOT project. In terms of, uh, the repair of the railing, um, I believe there's a damaged railing there, that's been damaged for a period of time. The state Bridge Crew does have an open work order, uh, to repair that railing, um, and, and they have said that they will handle that, that work. Finally, as far as, uh, the sign goes, um, I got, my assumption was there was, and I have hazy memory, but my assumption was that there was a sign that said Bridgewater on one side, Middleborough on the other. Uh, we've gone ahead and, and, uh, ordered a sign, uh, which should be in, uh, within the next week or so. So, we'll, we'll get that up, so that people know where they are when they're on the bridge. They may not know exactly what part of the bridge they're on, or any of that, but at least there'll be a sign that says they're coming into Bridgewater.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Alright. Uh, any requests for the next Town Manager's Report?
Yep.
Uh, Counselor George?
Thank you, through you to the Town Manager for my last meeting. Could we get an update on if we've determined who actually owns the property, where the tire dump is on Water Street? I think we've had sufficient time to make that determination. And then from there, next steps on how to address that situation? And then, I, I don't know if you have this information, but down the road, I believe there's a DOC report floating out there with potential facility closings. So that may be something that we want to get ahead of, if at all possible. If DOC is looking at Bridgewater, that even though prison mitigation is too small, that I think, but still, if we were to lose that and the facility, I think that would negatively impact the community. So, I don't know if, I've heard it, I didn't, I haven't seen anything, but if there's something out there, we should definitely get ahead of that as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional requests? I'm looking over, no. Alright, thank you. Alright, that concludes Town Manager's Report, thank you. Moving on to item J, Discussions, we have no discussions this evening. Item K, Committee Reports, uh, do we have any committee members who would care to make a report? Okay, we have none. Uh, moving on to item L, Legislation for Action.
Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to take items A through E as one motion.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I, the reason that I'm doing that, folks, is they're all grants that I don't think we necessarily need to review individually, so to expedite ti- expedite time, that's what I would recommend.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on that? And we did talk about them a little bit when they were introduced in the last meeting. Uh, so we have a motion to, uh, take them all as a group. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Uh, so I would entertain then a motion to approve items A through E?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to item F, Order O, FY twenty-four zero three six, uh, Town Department Capital Transfer Order. Budget and Finance voted three to oh, uh, three to zero to recommend at their three nineteen meeting. FinCom voted six oh to recommend at their three eighteen meeting. Uh, would defer to the Town Manager, is, is there any additional content for this one?
Going too fast for me.
Sorry. Uh, item F, the O FY twenty-four, the Capital Transfer Order.
Yep. Um, I have, there's no additional information that I can give you. I can, sir, I'm, if you, if counsel feels it, uh, is, is, uh, important, I can certainly go through the, uh, items.
I don't think so, I think we've, uh, discussed this in the past. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, uh, any additional discussion? I see none, let's move to a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Item G, Order O FY twenty-four zero three seven, Transfer Order, uh, Bridgewater-Rainham School District Capital Assessment. Budget and Finance voted three to zero to recommend at their three nineteen meeting. FinCom voted six to zero to recommend at their three eighteen meeting. I would defer to the Town Manager, is there any additional context here?
Uh, no additional context, uh, I will remind, uh, council and, and those that are watching that the, uh, district assesses us, not only their operating, um, uh, operating, uh, assessment, but also a capital assessment, this is the capital assessment. And, uh, you see in front of you, uh, the intended use, uh, Superintendent at both, uh, Budget and Finance, I believe, and Finance Committee indicated that, um, that they're intending to use all the money for exactly what, uh, is on that list.
Alright, thank you, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? I see none, we can move to a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item, item I, Resolution R FY twenty-four zero zero five, uh, Route eighteen corridor transportation planning study. Uh, the measure was not referred to any committee, fourteen days have passed, therefore it may finally be considered, uh, this evening. I would defer to the Town Manager just for a quick reminder on this one.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, the, uh, the resolution, um, essentially, uh, provides, uh, us the, um, trigger to sort of go out and start doing some prelim- preliminary, um, engineering work in order to provide, uh, safety recommendations that, that, uh, the OCPC plan has outlined, um, specifically, uh, parallel parking, uh, specifically, um, widening of, of sidewalks and, uh, and, uh, signalization of the southern end of the common to accommodate Bedford Street, uh, South Street. And obviously, there's a lot, uh, packed into that mix, but, uh, but this resolution will allow us to bring a, uh, funding, uh, funding order to you, uh, and then get that preliminary engineering underway.
Thank you, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those, or any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Uh, I did miss item H, uh, we'll go back and do that one. Order O FY twenty-four zero, uh, three eight, Capital Transfer Order for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Budget and Finance voted three to zero to recommend at their three nineteen meeting. FinCom voted six to zero to recommend at their three eighteen twenty-four meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? I see none, uh, entertain a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving ahead to item J, Petition P twenty twenty-four zero one eight, the twenty twenty-four Annual Town Election Warrant. Uh, it is required for the Town Council, uh, it is required that the Town Council accepts and approves as a matter of record.
Mister President, may I ask the annual question? Considering that this will be the last time I have to offer it. So Attorney Rollins, if we were not to approve the warrant, what would happen?
I think it'd be very likely that the town would have to sue the council to force them to put and approve, uh, the warrant, so that we could have an election.
Thank you very much.
Right. Uh, with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Suit of her.
Uh, item K, Proposed Zoning Ordinance D FY twenty-four zero zero three, Chapter seven point seven, Specialized Energy Code. Uh, Community and Economic Development, uh, had a split vote, one, uh, in favor, one abstaining, one against, to recommend at their one thirty-one twenty-four meeting. I would, uh, entertain a motion to, this is, uh, refer to advertising. This has not gone to rules and procedures. Uh, I think in prior discussions, we talked about this going to rules and procedures. So I would entertain a motion to refer to rules and procedures.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Uh, the next item is item L, Proposed Ordinance D FY twenty-two zero zero eight, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article Two, Legislative Branch, Section two dash one three, uh, comma A, Annual Stipend.
Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to rules and procedures.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I, we've heard a lot of feedback in regards to the actual, um, for the most part, uh, approval of any increase- approval of any increases, I know there was a question about how we came up with the number, I think the overall concern is in future councils, which again, I won't say, having the ability to increase, to approve an increase in their own stipend. So I think it is warranted to have a more in-depth discussion with that committee and come back with a final recommendation that we can move forward with.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any additional discussion on that?
Mr. President?
Please.
We, you'll remember that initially, and we've been discussing this matter for quite a number of months, and we had initially anticipated that perhaps future changes in any amount to be paid to a counselor would be, would require a charter amendment. And we put the question after some considerable debate before our town attorney, he did some research, he indicated to us that in fact, an existing Massachusetts statute, specifically Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 6A, provides for just such a change to be made by ordinance rather than by charter. And that was our, the solution that we concluded was most appropriate, and we proceeded ahead on that particular basis. Just to complete the comments with respect to what's before us, you'll note the highlighted language in the text of the proposed ordinance before you. And that was adopted at the Rules and Procedures Committee meeting held last week, during which we continued debate of this matter. And that highlighted text answers the question of what would happen for a, in the case of a counselor elected by a special election, in other words, not during the regular annual town election. So if a counselor were elected to the, person were elected to the council by a special election, it would be happening at some other point in the calendar, not on our annual town election day and at the end of April. In that case, of course, that would give rise naturally to the question of, well, how do we compensate that person? And the language that was agreed by the Rules and Procedures Committee in that respect was, as you read it, persons elected to serve as counselors by special town election shall be eligible for payment of an annual stipend payable in arrears in the amount of $5,000, reduced on a prorated basis commensurate, commensurate with the number of days beginning with the date of the special election. So we felt in committee that we had resolved that last outstanding issue that was the last open-ended item that was brought to our attention. We have heard comments, including once again this evening, from a citizen with respect to the matter of what about appointed counselors? And I just wanted to make reference to the existing language that we've already approved here in the council, where we refer to a person being elected to the council as a member of the town council. And the language further goes on to refer to such person, once elected, as an incumbent counselor. In other words, no differentiation is made in that language as to whether or not that person was elected, whether by special or regular town election, or appointed. We do under the charter have a procedure for appointing a counselor for a period of time, as at one point, Councilor Lindy was, as one point, I had been as well. So with respect to the comment that, that's not somehow addressed, the language actually as it exists does contemplate precisely that, because it does not differentiate. It just calls a member of the council, a member of the council, no matter how they got there, if they were appointed or elected. So I just wanted to provide comments on that. And I'd like to further just provide a comment that I've, reiterate a comment that I'd made some weeks ago, I don't know, maybe months ago, at this point I've lost track. But it's with respect to the proposal that a, a citizen body be empowered with the ability to consider the issue of future changes in the compensation amount at some point in the future. And just with respect to that, as I had referred, as I had commented previously, our charter makes no provision for such a citizen body to do that. If we were to contemplate that, that is a charter change. It does not, the charter does not empower us to create a, a committee so-called for that purpose. Very simply put, this council, as it is presently constituted, we are the representatives of the towns' voters. Literally, the buck stops with us. That would be a decision for the council to make. And keep in mind too, that as an ordinance, the manner in which the amount of stipend would change, if it were to be changed, would require a public hearing, much as the public hearings that we've had here in the council, including this very evening. So there is a lot of opportunity for public input with respect to any potential change in the stipend amount. And keep in mind, one further point, which I'll just make quickly, which is that I would wager that no member of the council sitting here this evening will in fact, still remain a member of the council by any point at which this proposed language is actually enacted. This needs to not only be approved by the council, it needs to go to the state legislature, which we have no necessar, no reason necessarily to believe it'll take place even this year. After that, it has to come back to the town to be ratified by the voters at the ballot. So this is literally some few, at least I think, years away, even if it were approved tonight, to be sent to advertising. And again, there are so many opportunities for public input with respect to a, admittedly, what would be a controversial issue as to whether or not the council is re-considering an increase in the amount of the stipend to which they're entitled. There are many opportunities for citizen input that would be required to take place in order for that to happen. So those are my only comments, and I have nothing further at the moment to say.
Thank you, Counselor Chase, any additional comments? Counselor Lindy?
I just want to thank Counselor Chase for really, very clearly outlining all of that, and thank you for your work in the Rules and Procedures Committee.
Thank you. Yep, Dr. Perry?
Thank you, and again, again to Mr. Chase for that great summary. The only thing I would also mention is, I know we had discussed in the past, and I know people of the audience have asked about the amounts, we had looked at towns of similar size and numbers, and we have consistent numbers as far as the stipend amount that other towns of similar size and town councils now have. So that number wasn't just arrived willy-nilly, it was, it was based on analysis of other surrounding towns, so I just want to put that information out there.
Thank you. Counselor Gallagher?
So, Mr. President, I guess my question is, is, there's a motion and there's a second to refer back to rules and procedures. I guess I'm trying to clarify, what do we want them to do? Anything? Or is there a specific task that we want them to look at? Or is, can they, once it's referred back, they can, they can take a look at anything, I guess, just clarification?
And I was the one who made the motion, and, you know, Fred, Fred brings up a lot of great points that I probably should have remembered, that I would prob, I'd probably contemplate actually withdrawing my motion to send the rules and procedures. I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. Has been withdrawn, so we do not have a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion to refer to advertising.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to refer to advertising in a second, any additional discussion? Okay, I would maybe just add, I think this might have been one of the first things I worked on when I joined the council, it has been around for a while. And so while I appreciate, you know, that sometimes it's hard to keep track of these, I, I do want everyone to know that this is one that has gone around and around, had a lot of great input, gone through a lot of changes, been back and forth to rules and procedures to make sure that we're kind of checking all of the boxes. We did a review of what the state process is, I think it actually includes the governor's signature as well. We did a review of what other towns pay, we had a lot of conversation about what we thought was appropriate here. And so I, I do just want to highlight the fact that this is the end of a long process, not the beginning of a short one. So, so I just, just want to make sure that that's out there. So we have a motion to refer to advertising, we have a second, any additional discussion before we go to vote? Oh, we'll go to a voice vote, all those in favor say aye, aye. All those opposed say nay, the motion passes. Thank you. That concludes the new business, now we have M, old business, oh, sorry. That concludes L, legislation for action, we're now moving on to M, old business. We have no old business. Item N, we took out of order, new business, so that's already completed. We're going to move on to item O, citizen comment. At this point, I would invite anyone from the public to approach the podium with the reminder that we do ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less, bring your own timer.
Just a minute. I want to thank everybody that got involved in the Stiles and Hart Park work. When I was on the, on the council, that was a center of a lot of work that I did. The Lincoln Andrews family, which owns Stiles and Hart, worked with the town to actually add five acres to the park. So what Mr. Dutton has on the desk there is really opening up the park to the citizens of Bridgewater. And what the people will find is that there's about 75 acres of parkland inside the park, and it has two ponds, it has a circular walking trail that will be maintained after the work is done. And it, and it really gets you out of the, you know, the heartbeat of the central business district and, and off the road a little bit. So I really appreciate everybody that continued on the work on that, because I'm looking forward to doing that. Also, the other park that we talked about, that you guys talked about tonight, is, D-Cam is finishing up their work, I was representing the Lions at one of the meetings, and in the fall, we hope to be doing some trail cleaning and setup, along with several other groups that are being organized. And that's a 1.8 mile walking trail, so 1.8, 3.2 miles round trip. It leads over to the, the river, the river actually may have, have a walking trail as well, and the new, the new home site has, next to it has additional walk trails within that, so that neighborhood also gets to benefit from the trail. And I assume that has parking and some other amenities as well. So two big open space projects that are coming to fruition, and I think that congratulations are in order, thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
How you doing, Kevin Marshall, Auburn Street, about the Veterans District, everything, just real quick, I'm in favor of it, there's a whole handful of reasons, I'll go way over the three minutes that you allot if I try to get into them. But I'm in favor of a fully staffed district, and that district being a full-time agent, a full-time clerk, and at least a part-time agent, as long as it's that, I am fully in favor of that, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Do one more, this is Jean D. Batista, T-60 Lakeside Drive, again. One of the things that's becoming clear to me is I attend these meetings, and I definitely enjoy and learn quite a bit from them, but it's how much I don't know, and I think that sentiment is shared by the general public, there's a lot of things that we don't know how they work. For instance, if we do have feedback, we don't know what happens in terms of how you get follow-up effectively for that feedback, and what happens to a suggestion or recommendation that is made, especially if it's a significant one. Secondly, I know that town elections are coming up for the town council, and I can tell you that it's a puzzle to the public as to find out the views of the candidates, we have to kind of chase them all over the place in order to find out what exactly are their views, because there doesn't seem to be a central spot for them to, that's town-supported, to allow them to make their views known to the public, which I think is important to the public. My only other comment is that it is important that we get this type of follow-up, and that that follow-up is, you know, basically, because as Melissa said earlier in the meeting, there's quite a bit, when, when somebody is a citizen who cares about a specific issue, and they've researched the topic extensively, and then, you know, send their concerns and don't receive adequate feedback, especially if that feedback doesn't give any reasons for why a decision is being made, I think that is very concerning to the public. And so I, I am encouraged by what you said, Michael, that you will be looking at, you know, what comments were made and responding to them, I appreciate that, I asked the town council to do the same, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Carlton Hunt, Austin Street, I just wanted to make sure people know that the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee are having a forum for all elected positions in the town. The first one is the 28th, and the second one is the third. There are two positions on the 28th, two positions on the third. I just want people to know that that will be taped, it will be put on the website, so people will be somewhat informed, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Comments? All right, I see none, so that concludes citizen comments. Moving on to item P, council comments, we will start with Counselor Gallagher.
Me first, all right. I'll be brief, first of all, I want to thank those that are, have been reappointed to the committees that we voted on early in the meeting, and also want to congratulate our new official finance director, Laurie Guarini, for that appointment, I think that was a well-deserved appointment, and also the ratification of our official new fire chief, John Slats, I think those are very, two good, great appointments. That is it for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson?
No comments from me tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow. Just lost my train of thought, that's okay. So one of the things that Mr. Baumgarten brought up, which, which I understand and I agree in regards to remote participation for meetings, you know, I'm for anything that will inspire, produce, you know, more participation, things like that. But I do preface it with a little bit of caution, so I, I'm the only council president, hopefully will stay that way, that never had an in-person meeting during his presidency, because I was president during COVID. We were still able to transact business, I think, you know, everyone involved, both on the council that, at that time, and, you know, we, we got a lot of things done, town never shut down, but it had a lot of challenges. Technology, even today is not that good, we, we run into problems with streaming things, putting it out there. During the meetings, you've got to manage to, you know, potentially 40, 50 people online, people in the audience, you miss somebody, they get upset, rightfully so, I mean, it's, in order for that to happen, it's going to take a lot of work, both on the technology side, as well as the coordination side, and maybe it will down the road. But I think that's going to be something that I think we'll have to grow into it. I think also the state's going to have to deliver some guidance on that, because there are some treading of waters with OML in regards to, you know, people kind of claiming that they were shut off because they weren't recognized, you didn't see them, I mean, it's, you know, nothing was done nefariously, but it does tend to cause some problems from there. So hopefully we can get around that. And I'd just like to see more participation. There is on BTV, I was trying to look it up, I can't find it, there is a candidate forum, as well as what Dr. Hunt had brought up, so hopefully between the town committees and BTV, you can get a sense for what people are standing for, things of that nature. Again, maybe down the road, there's another forum, hopefully that will develop as well. But I, I will end with this, it's, it's really nice to see some faces in the crowd I've never seen before. I'd love to see you guys again, even though I'm not here for that much longer, but I understand that people are busy, and you've got lives, and you've got commitments, but hopefully you can take what you've experienced here. But um, hopefully you can take what you've experienced here, go out to your neighbors, your friends, and if people do have the opportunity to come, please tell them to come. You know, some of these meetings are, are fairly quick, some of them are fairly long. But I think everyone walks away, I think, with a little bit of a, a better understanding of how things flow. But a, as was pointed out, there is a lot of nuances. You know, I've been on the council for almost eight years and I'm still, you know, learning some things here and there and I could probably learn more. So hopefully that will change as well. That's about it. Thank you very much. Oh, and by the way, congratulations to the employees as well. I think great picks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor George. Uh, Dr. Perry?
I thought I was coming my way next. Um, again, to echo the same sentiments, I want to uh, congratulate the reappointments, Paula Bragan, uh, Lorraine Coroza and Paul Batista. Uh, thank you for their volunteerism. We need continued uh, uh, participation in that regard to help fill these types of positions. Certainly want to congratulate again Lori Guarini. She's got, you know, wonderful experience with us uh, over the years and she'll continue to do a fine job. I also want to, you know, get a, a special congratulations to uh, to Chief John Schlats. I, I grew up with Chief Schlats, played football with him, graduated high school with him. He's a wonderful choice. I ju, I love to see, you know, people who grew up in town, who love the town, stay with the town and be important leaders of the town. We've seen that with many other chiefs before. We've seen that with uh, 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 Police Chief as well. So I just want to congratulate John. I know he'll do a great job. Um, he, I guess I've, I've known him all my life and uh, he'll continue to do a great job with the town. So I want to give him my, my sincerest uh, congratulations uh, on the appointment. That's all I got. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Murphy?
No comments. I mean, thank you.
Alright, Counselor McKinnon?
No comments, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just uh, very briefly, I'd certainly like to echo the congratulations that we extend to our new uh, Finance Director and Fire Chief. Certainly uh, those are uh, very well-deserved promotions and the town will be uh, especially well-served by their continued efforts. I thank too, all the citizens who stepped forward tonight. I think we had a very uh, productive meeting and it's largely uh, a benefit of the input that uh, you've provided to us and continue to provide to us on a regular basis. So we uh, we certainly appreciate that uh, a great deal. I think we've made particularly good progress with respect to the matter of the veteran service uh, uh, agent and uh, we'll see um, what further developments arise there. But I think that we've now had an opportunity to air a lot of the uh, background of, understand, gain a better understanding of some of the implications of the uh, the district plan. And uh, it uh, it certainly, I think, is uh, beginning to become a little more, we're beginning to become a little more at ease with the questions that we have to consider when we, uh, when we consider that proposal. But all in all, I think it's been a very productive session and I uh, want to thank you citizens. I want to thank our, my fellow council members for a very productive uh, evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lindy?
I just wanted to, I don't want to repeat everything everybody else said. Congratulations are in order for a lot of people, but especially to our citizens that come and be part of the process. Thursday night, five-thirty, there's a Conservation Commission meeting. People should definitely attend it, participate in it, comment on it. It's important to the future of this community. It's not my district, but the NIP is a public resource and we want to protect it and keep it for eternity. Thank you.
Thank you. I am last. A couple of comments. Also, I want to congratulate uh, the Fire Chief and the Finance Director. Agree that uh, those are excellent choices. Wanted to say that I appreciated the comments about not responding. I am one of the people that you sent it to and so my sincere apologies for not getting back to you. Your willingness to do the research, to put together uh, the email, to share your thoughts is critical. It's part of what we do. And so this is, that's on me and my apologies, I will, I will respond to you. And uh, the other question on how do things work? It is very difficult. And as others have said, when you sort of, and Bill sort of mentioned the fact that he's creating a trading manual so that if you get, you know, end up on the town council, you can kind of learn how things work. So the counselors are very much learning and I can imagine that if it's difficult for us, it's probably three times as difficult for those that are trying to follow along. And so I would say to that, um, we are trying to figure out ways to just kind of keep the right information in front of people that care about it. And so if there are ideas on that, uh, or places where we've fallen short that we could correct, that feedback would be really helpful uh, too. I also appreciated the comments on the MBTA. I think there was some information there that I hadn't heard before. And uh, I would just say, I think that's, for me personally, that's a great way to kind of present information to the council to kind of help us understand where it comes from and, and your perspective based on that. So I really appreciated the effort that went into that research as well. And then I will say lastly, we frequently hear about public comment. I do agree that we need to kind of come out with a, a discussion probably about that. The open meeting law dictates a lot of what we do and along with some sort of legal findings on how much flexibility we're allowed to have in the agenda and what we talk about. And so uh, so a lot of what we're doing, just so people know, isn't because we don't want to have a conversation about it. It's because we're trying to find the right legal way to like navigate that conversation. And uh, as people, you know, that are kind of in this space, the consequences of doing that wrong uh, can be pretty significant. So we just want to make sure we're doing everything right. And we'll continue to, to learn in that space, I think. So I think that's uh, that is it. With that, I'll conclude item P. We'll go on to executive session. We have none this evening. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion a second. All those in favor say aye, aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes.